Good evening and welcome to our first meeting of June. I'd like to thank those of you in our audience tonight and also those who are watching us on our Electric City Television. I will lead us in the invocation tonight in respect to the flag given by Councilman Buck Roberts. Please rise. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon our community. As a council, we ask that you look after our teammates who put themselves in homes way every day and quite frankly, the rest of our teammates that support our activities. We ask that you be with us as policymakers as we make decisions about the city that affects its financial future and its quality of life as citizens. And we ask all of these things with your name. Amen.
Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The minutes of our May 14th meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not hearing any, do I have a motion to approve?
No.
First by Mr. Buck Roberts, second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? The minutes of May 14th pass unanimously. We have two items of old business and the first item is request second reading of ordinance 18-07 to revise section 42-62 of the Anderson City Code regarding accumulations prohibited and declared nuisance. Mr. McCall?
Mayor and council, this is an extra tool in our toolbox and Maurice McKenzie, our planning and development director, is going to tell you a little bit of what this revision to our ordinance is about.
Thank you. This came before you at the last council meeting and approved on first reading, but sometimes with our code of laws, our city codes, zoning codes, sometimes with changes in technology or other needs that we may see, we need to make refinements to our documents. And in this particular case, we're talking about the City of Anderson's property maintenance code, which is part of the International Property Maintenance Code, which most cities in the country have adopted. They work well for us. We, it takes care of, it addresses a lot of things relating to the exterior conditions of properties, weeds, accumulation of garbage, rodent harbinger, things of that nature. But we have found that over time, there are certain things from an aesthetic standpoint, our guidelines really do not address. And we've been working through these over the past few months and added some language to that. As you can see, in the section 42-62, the portions of the language written in red is what we are proposing to add. Basically, talking about household goods, things that don't belong outside of your front yard. This all applies to the front yards. Boxes, machinery, furniture that's not designed for outdoor use, those type of things are, we're looking to have those prohibited in front yards. It's something that our code enforcement officers can enforce when they're out in the field and we do believe this will be something to be an extra tool for them to use, which will help make our community more attractive and healthier from an aesthetic standpoint. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, sir. I know it seems like a while since we talked about it and I know that you and your guys have done a lot of work along with a couple of council members, too. So I'll open it up for questions or discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for taking the time to get as involved in this as possible, meeting with all of us, because I certainly know that the residents that are affected the most by people not complying with some of the, our existing guidelines will be happy to hear this if it passes. So with that, I would make a recommendation, accept it on first reading.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously on the second and final reading. Thank you. Our next item is request consideration of paving resolutions to Anderson County and the Anderson County Transportation Committee and the South Carolina Department of Transportation. Mr. McConnell?
We are very fortunate to be able to access other dollars from the Highway Department, South Carolina Department of Transportation, from Anderson County, through the Anderson County Transportation Committee. And each year, you all pass resolutions. I think Maurice is going to share with you just a reminder of the process that we go through every year and what we hope to attain by doing these resolutions.
Yes, this is an item we bring to you on an annual basis. And as Ms. McConnell mentioned, we submit paving priority resolutions to the Anderson County Council, DOT, and also the Anderson County Transportation Committee or the CTC. And these are our wish lists, basically. But what we have found is that these resolutions do provide direction for these funding agencies. As a matter of fact, the CTC, they require that the city council forward them a resolution with our street paving priority. So that shows you that these do, these do help. And right now, we do not know what the funding is going to look like from these agencies this year. But keep in mind, over the last two years, we saw 27 streets paved. So we saw a significant number of streets paved in the last two years and that was very helpful. There were some roads that were in very poor shape. What we have are two lists. One's a state maintained list, DOT roads. One is our local streets. And with the state list, we have a list of about 90 streets in town. There's more state roads, but what we have on that list are the streets that we are aware of that are the ones that are most needed. We get a lot of public complaints about those. And again, that's 90 streets there and we have a database of all of the local streets that we rank. And what we do is, we evaluate the streets using the SC DOT's ranking system. Helps keep things consistent. But basically, it is a weighted type ranking with paving conditions, take into account 50 percent, average daily traffic is 20 percent, economic impact 10 percent, and population affected 20 percent. So what we end up getting is a tiered ranking system. And what you'll see in your council packets with all the resolutions are the top streets for the local and for the state. We don't submit to these funding agencies all of our streets because it's just a long list. We know they can only get a few of those every year. So we cut it off after a few streets. So you'll see those in there. But again, this is something that we see as important and it's something that the CTC definitely needs. And like I said, right now, we don't know what the funding is going to look like, but when we do find out, we'll certainly keep all of you posted in terms of what we could see upcoming this year.
Good. Thank you. Any questions, comments?
I have one. Ms. Lottage? Up there on, when it says City of Anderson Local Paving Tier Rankings, at the top, it says Glen Street Local Portion?
Yes. There's a...
Thank you. Ms. Chapman?
The previous list that we had from last year, how many of those were actually paved that were on our list?
I don't have that number, but what we found is the CTC, they follow our paving resolution to a T. They want to see it so they can go that route. DOT, they do review it, but sometimes they have their own streets they have lined up to pave. I can see if I can compare those.
I just know in the past, we, DOT, basically, they kind of go off in a different angle and we make this list, but they don't seem to follow it very strongly.
And we, it was like that. And with these 27 streets over the past two years, they did pave, they were like our top 16 streets they paved. So they did follow it this time. Back in the day, it did seem like, yeah, number 63 would be paved or number 27, but with this last round of funding, they did stick to our resolutions.
Excellent. Thanks.
Anything else, Ms. Holden?
With that, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we approve this?
First by Mr. Horvath, and the second by Buck Roberts. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. I'd like to publicly thank Chairman Ronnie Townsend and his committee for working with the City of Anderson and its good partnership.
Mr. Mayor, if you all note, there are three resolutions that you will need to sign as that comes around to you.
Good. Thank you. We'll move to new business and we have five items. And the first item is request consideration of referral to the Planning Commission, a petition to annex and zone to our five single-family, approximately .2 acres of land at 1704 South Murray Avenue Extension. Ms. McConnell?
This might sound like deja vu to y'all because you have recently annexed neighboring properties, 1706 and 1709 South Murray Avenue Extension. So I think this neighbor decided if it was good perhaps for those two, then it might be good for this particular property to request annexation. As you know, this is the beginning of the public process when it comes to annexation and this will go to the Planning Commission next month. But please note that because of the Independence Day holiday, the Planning Commission will meet on July 10th instead of July the 3rd. And we would certainly recommend referring it to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Ms. McConnell, this is also in C5.
It, yes, ma'am.
As led, as the last clause of...
Yes, correct.
You're really going to say it. Northern City.
I'm going to turn my motion. Does that move? First by Mr. Horvath. Second? Second by Mr. Lottage. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? That process starts. Thank you. Our next item is request consideration of an ordinance adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2018-2019. Ms. McConnell?
This is a little bit, we went through a little bit of a different process with our budget this year. So it is a, the culmination of a, of an effort that puts a real focus on the council's strategic directions. It also looks at our estimates for what we think our expenditures, our revenues, things that recur, as well as making sure that we have some monies that we also assign to our healthy fund balance. Margot Martin, our finance director, will go through some of the highlights of this particular 18-19 budget proposal.
So we are requesting approval of ordinance 1808 to adopt the budget for the fiscal year 2018-2019. The total budget for all funds is $68,255,53. Our tax mileage will remain the same at 116. Last year was reassessment and we rolled back the tax mileage from 118 to 116 and that will remain the same. We are proposing a 6% water increase or $1.43 a month for an average customer. I would like to note, based on council's direction, in 2011, the water rate increase is dollar for dollar inside and outside. So inside, 6%, outside is only 3%. We are proposing a 3% sewer rate increase or $1.40 a month. And these rate changes provide for investment in continuing the infrastructure needs and customer demands, as well as our increased costs, such as purchased water. We have a five-year capital plan for the utilities, which includes $10 million of improvements in the water fund and $21 million improvements in the sewer fund over five years. The water rates have not changed since July 1, 2011. City rates for both remain at one of the lowest or near lowest compared to our area providers. And the average monthly water bill will go to 25.35 and the average monthly sewer to 40.35. Our health insurance did increase on the employer side and not employee of 7.4%. That's $187,000 additional expenditures. We have a 1% mandate increase for the police and fire force retirement system at an increase of $118,700 in our expenditures. We are proposing a 2% cost of living increase for employees. The CPI this year was 2.13. We're proposing 2%. That comes to $330,000. We have budgeted some new positions. We've budgeted an assistant police chief, a crime analyst, and four additional police officers patrolled for the downtown and adjacent areas at a $307,300. We have $2.4 million in prior year funding for the roof and building envelopes at City Hall and Municipal Business Center. As Linda mentioned, we did try to project five years in the future, looking at the capital and not just budgeting for this year. So we're trying to help prioritize our uses and sources of funds. So total budget is $68 million, up from 61 with 4.7, almost $5 million in capital spending. So we had a public hearing tonight at 5:00. We had zero in attendance from the public. We had several division heads who attended, thank them. And we did have the media there. So we are requesting first reading of ordinance 1808 adopting the budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. The budget for all funds is $68,255,53. You do have at your desk or area, there was a page missing of the copies that went out of the packet last week. So that includes the entire budget ordinance that's attached. Do we have any questions?
Well, I know we've met as a group before with questions and answers and I will see if there are any additional questions, answers, questions, okay? Ms. Chapman?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank Margot for meeting with me because I stepped in her office for two separate occasions. She answered all my questions to my satisfaction. And I would ask, when is the last time that the City of Anderson has had an increase in mileage? Isn't this like the 17th or 18th year?
We haven't had an increase. We rolled back when we implemented the sanitation fee. We rolled back mileage and then we rolled back with reassessment last year. But as far as an increase, I would have to look.
I think it's, Ms. McConnell, is it 17 or 18 years?
Sounds about right.
So, and this would be the, this year coming up would be no increase in taxes?
Correct.
Any other questions, comments?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the budget for 2018-2019.
First by Mr. Lottage. Second by Mr. Horvath. Any further comments, discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously on the first reading. Third item will do business is request consideration of an ordinance admitting the 2017-2018 budget. Ms. McConnell?
We do, from time to time, have things that occur during the year that come before the city council. And what this ordinance does is it addresses those things which have been items that were not included in the original 17-18 budget. And Margot is going to share the details of those items with you for the budget amendment.
All right. Budget of 17-18 by increasing the general fund budget $324,000, capital fund budget of $40,000, and economic development fund budget of $11,000, and TIF budget of $145,000. And these are items that council has approved expenditures for in this past fiscal year, but were not part of our original budget. Budget amendment is not necessarily amending an operating budget because we forecasted it correctly. Budget amendment is to reflect council approval of expenditures in the final budget for the fiscal year and reflect financial changes, decisions that council has approved. The amendments allow the budget and audit to more accurately reflect actual revenues received and expenditures made that were unknown when the original budget was adopted. Therefore, when we do our year-end reporting, we can comparisons between budget and actual more meaningful. Attached is the ordinance where it has the line-by-line specific items. I can read those for you if you'd like or you have any questions about any of those?
Let's go to questions. Why don't we do that?
Okay.
We had packet information. Ms. Lottage?
For the public, could you just sort of explain again to the public so that they understand that we're not adding to the budget? These are things that have been, that have happened through the year and that have been added to the budget so that we can balance the budget toward the end of the year?
Right. So for example, Fire Department, we have a capital lease and we had leftover capital lease proceeds. So we did not, we budgeted the capital lease in the prior year's budget. We had lease proceeds left over. So the Fire Department, and you approved on August 28, '17, to use the remainder of those lease proceeds for turnout gear, but that is not in his actual budget. So he had a zero. So if I don't do a budget amendment to increase his expenditure item, it looks like he's over when in fact he's not really.
Right.
So that's the purpose. It's not saying we budgeted $5,000 for gas and we spent $10,000. We're not doing those kind of amendments. This is an amendment to true changes that you had made, financial decisions you'd made. If you used prior year funds for a project, use capital lease proceeds. Or you had monies left over at June 30, '16 that you did not get to spend, or June 30, '17 you didn't spend, that you need to spend this year. That's what this is.
How about the biggest one was the NEA grant? Can we talk about that?
Yes, I can. Let me flip to that page. So the NEA grant, we received monies from Duke of $60,000 two fiscal years ago. That monies were never used for that Church Street Heritage Project. So that money was received in two years, not in the budget that I just, that we're currently in. The city had a match of $10,000 and then we got an NEA grant of $75,000. So none of those expenditures or revenue sources were in the budget. So we're budget, that's what this amendment is doing, is putting in the monies and the expenditure that council approved in February of '16.
Kind of like dollars from heaven, right?
That's right.
Good. Any other questions? Ms. Chapman?
Is this, let's see, never mind, I got it.
Okay.
Anything else, guys?
We had four decreases and a lot of increases, right?
Those decreases were actually where we, the stormwater engineer position, we've moved it from the stormwater fund to the general fund. So we're decreasing the stormwater's salary and moving it to the general fund. The other ones, you're increasing your revenue and you're increasing your expense.
Ms. Chapman?
And this is where only increases that are beyond the $10,000 threshold that city manager can make on her own. It's just council-approved amendments or changes.
Right. Well, we don't have any that were less than $10,000 though.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes. So these are the only ones that we have.
All right.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this.
First by Mr. Horvath. Second? Second by Mr. Lottage. Any further questions, discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? That ordinance passes unanimously. Thank you, Margot. We'll move to the fourth item and ask request consideration of a contract for industrial pretreatment program services. Ms. McConnell?
You all know, as part of our wastewater treatment provision of services, we have industries that are part of our customer base. Those industries require certain regulations and guidelines that we must follow and that's our industrial pretreatment program. Jeff Caldwell, our utilities director, will tell you a little bit more about what the industrial pretreatment program is and why we are requesting consideration of this contract with Goldie and Associates this evening.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell. Basically, our treatment plants are designed for a normal domestic and commercial waste load. So industries, they use chemicals and toxic pollutants that if they were to pass on through our treatment plant, they would, could damage our equipment, they would not be treated well, they would be discharged into the environment. So these pretreatment programs are more local to the industry, built for their specific needs in order, so they can meet the guidelines of what our plants were originally designed for. The, without this, like I said, it will pass through and so this program is needed to reduce health and environmental risk. We currently have 14 industries in the program. They're made up of CD customers and also Anderson County customers that are discharged and flew and are treated at one of our treatment plants. Due to some recent staffing changes, we took the opportunity to look at organizational structure. We also looked at that organizational structure when we were going through our C-MO process and had built in some ways for us to get some succession planning into that, into that pretreatment coordinator role. We've had two staff changes since we started that and it just hasn't been successful in order to be able to implement. So with this, there's a lot of regulations that go into it. There's a lot of knowledge, organizational skills and things that you just, really just can't come off the street and do. So we thought it'd be a good opportunity to bring somebody along who is well-trained. They're the leaders in the program, in the pretreatment industry. And Goldie and Associates is who we talked to. They are currently working with us to amend our sewer use ordinance. They've worked with us in the past to help industries that may have gotten out of compliance, helping them get in compliance. They've helped us with training and any other questions we've had. We feel like they'll make a good transition into this program. They know the city's sewer use ordinance, they know the program, they know a lot of the industries out there. They've worked with a lot of the industries out there. So if we were to ever bring, feel like we needed to bring the pretreatment coordinator back on staff, they could provide that training and get them up to speed also. So I would think that it lends itself well and would be valuable to us. The current budget had a salary and benefits for that position of about, little over $54,000, almost $54,400. Goldie was able to, will be able to perform these services on an annual basis for $54,000. So it's basically a wash in our, in our budget. And so we did attach their scope of work and their proposal, kind of go through what is in their scope, what's not in their scope. And I think they did mention something about, it's almost difficult to impossible to find that one person that has all, can do all of that. I will say that we had, under that coordinator position, we had given them some additional duties as far as some sludge management, biosolage management, our monthly DMRs. So we've had to, had to spread that out among the departments. So that'll be one of the things we, we look at to see if we need to add this position back in the future. Right now, we're recommending that you would approve the annual contract with Goldie and Associates.
Good. Are they a local company?
Synica.
Synica. Any other questions, guys?
I have one. Ms. Lottage? What other, what other cities or municipalities or sewer water systems do they work with?
They, they run the entire programs for the City of Felton, the City of Abbeville, and Hartland. And they also consult with Anderson County and a lot of other local wastewater providers.
Is this, I know it's basically a wash as far as the money is concerned. Do you expect any kind of rate increases over the year from them or do you think it's going to stay fairly level?
For this year, it is fairly level. It does include up to 15 industries and we're currently at 14. So we have the capacity to add another industry and still stay within that, that $54,000 every year threshold. It is a little cheaper going the yearly route. I think it was around $5,000 a month to go six months or shorter. So we are getting a little benefit there.
We certainly think it's the right direction for one year to benefit our program. And again, we get the benefit of a team of people as opposed to just one individual. And since the dollars are washed, we think it's an appropriate step for us right now.
I was also going to ask if, how, it sounds like it's a fairly technical job.
It is.
It must cost a good bit to train somebody for that position, too.
It does. And like I said, the regulations are always changing.
And so Goldie keeps up with all of these new regulations and everything. Okay. Okay.
Good. Anything else?
I make the motion we accept it as presented.
Second. First by Mr. Chapman, and then a second, Mr. Buck Roberts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass this unanimous. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
And if we found the right person, we could.
An improvement project, intersection improvement project on their list, and this is where Highway twenty-nine North and Highway twenty-nine Business come together. The reason that they're asking, or the reason that they have this project on their intersection improvement list is due to at least twenty-eight crashes at that site, January one, twenty thirteen, through the end of twenty seventeen. And they feel like the answer to improving that intersection is to realign the intersection. The reason this is before you this evening is because due to that realignment and construction project, there are utilities that are in the way. Principally, our water and sewer utilities are in the proposed design of this intersection improvement. And DOT, in order to proceed with this construction project, is saying that our, our water and sewer utilities need to be relocated at the city's expense, not as a construction cost of the DOT. The cost that we're talking about to relocate approximately two hundred linear feet of twelve-inch water line, that's about nineteen thousand dollars. To cut and cap an eight-inch water line, seven thousand dollars. And to replace forty linear feet of eight-inch sewer line is about five thousand dollars. All total, that's a thirty-one, thirty-one thousand dollar expenditure that would come out of our water and sewer utility fund to make that change. It's interesting that in this session of the legislature, there was a bill introduced in which a highway department project, if there were utilities that needed to be relocated, then the highway department would be responsible for those utility relocation costs. That, the session was nearing the end before action could be taken on that bill, but we feel like there will certainly be some traction on that in the next session.
It made it out of committee?
I believe it made it out of committee, yes, sir. But because we are, we are the, we are the last cog in this wheel to make this project move forward, that is the, what the highway department requires is our signing of this resolution saying that we'll pay for the cost of the relocation of those utilities. So we bring that to you this evening for your consideration.
Thank you. It sounds like a unfund.
Unfunded mandate, yes, sir.
But in regards to safety, that's something that we should do. Dr. Thompson.
We waited, maybe they were the paying part.
I don't know, Dr. Thompson. You know, I think, I think from the standpoint, this obviously was a project that was on their, on their radar in terms of, they do have funds that are available for intersection improvements. So I'm sure they had been looking at this location for a while. We did participate. Jeff met with them on several occasions. We did make some, with the DOT, we did make some, I think some, we, we got some changes made during the process that allowed our, took into account our consideration of where those utilities are located, and maybe kind of mediated our cost somewhat. I feel like we ended up in as good a position as we could, given what they're asking, the actual way that the realignment of the roads is being configured. So probably not, Dr. Thompson.
So where would you relocate these lines?
Well, they just get shifted over based upon how they realign that intersection. I mean, they've already drawn up the drawings, Jeff's reviewed it, we've given our input. So I mean, signing this, or your approval of my signing the resolution, gives the DOT authorization to move forward with that construction.
Mr. Roberts?
Buck Roberts.
That's in my seat, and that is a terrible intersection. I've been through it a million times, I guess, but it's dangerous. It needs something done.
I agree. Ms. Chapman.
You know, you and I sit on the ANATs committee. I don't remember this. Did this come before us on ANATs?
It is, it's a safety, it's a safety project, so chances are you wouldn't see this on the ANATs major list.
Sometimes there's a safety list that they give us that, so. But, yeah, I agree. I mean, it'd be interesting to see how they, how they realign a wishbone intersection. But is it, is it going to come back in at ninety degrees? So they are going to make, wow, okay, well, definitely.
But to your point earlier about planning arose, I guess, another thing is that if they knew it was on their plan, it would have helped us if we knew it was on their plan, too, if we were involved in the relocation of utilities.
Well, and I will say that sometimes simply having a conversation, you know, in this case, we can't completely get out of the way. That's, I think that's, regardless of how they designed it, we were going to be in the way. So, but I think to that point, anytime that we can have that kind of conversation with our various partners out there, and there may be alternatives, it certainly works for us to have those conversations.
Good for you. Ms. Harley.
How long has that intersection been like that? Does anyone have an estimate? Probably fifty years.
Sixty, probably sixty.
Probably, yeah.
Sixty years it's gone. I mean, it is, it's a horrible intersection. How old is our pipe that's under the ground that we're going to have to cut?
About the same age.
And do we anticipate any problems?
We think it's probably a good move for us. There is one section of clay pipe, I think, that we're, we're getting rid of and replacing, so it's, it's not a bad thing. It's just, as the mayor indicated, as you all know, when you don't plan to spend those monies and you plan to spend them some other way, this was an unexpected expenditure for us.
And last question, will this be one of those items that'll show up as a change, like the budget?
Yes, as a.
He could, he does, he does have special projects budget, so depending on where he is, he may not need a budget amendment.
But that could be.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's an example of what we're talking about.
I'm, I'm, I'm not even sure where this is.
Do you know where the old Harley-Davidson?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It's, it.
Oh, I know.
Okay.
No more. Yeah, I know exactly.
Reference point.
That's how southerners give directions, you know.
That's exactly right.
Anything else, guys? I would make a motion to approve. First by Mr. Harley, second by Mr. Buck Roberts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They pass this unanimous. One last item, administrative briefing, Ms. McConnell.
Yes, summertime is here, and there's some things on the agenda for the activities in the downtown. Friday, this coming Friday, the fifteenth, is movie night in Carolina Renn Park. Note, the time is eight fifty PM, that's when it gets dark, and the movie is The Greatest Showman. On Saturday, the sixteenth, that's the Saturday before Father's Day car show downtown, which is from ten AM to four PM, and that's always a successful event with a lot of participation. Then on Friday, the twenty-second, Shakespeare in the Park at eight PM. That's on Friday, the twenty-second, Saturday, the twenty-third, and Sunday, the twenty-fourth. So we've, we actually have people who come from out of town and plan their trips here to see Shakespeare in the Park. So I think we're, June is lining up to be a busy month of events in the downtown and otherwise. That's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
Shakespeare in the Park is a free event, right?
It's a free event, correct.
Ms. Thompson?
Just to, just to ask, do you know what the plays are going to be, Shakespeare?
Hamlet, my favorite.
Yes, Hamlet, yes.
Ms. Thompson?
How many movie nights do we have this year? We were able to make one in attendance, it's just.
Like, one a month. One a month.
As the attendance remained very high, I mean, it was packed.
It's been good.
We were the last one, and I was shocked how many people were actually there. I think it's a great thing, we appreciate it. Exactly.
Yeah, you need to put that with the N.
Well, thank you. Appreciate all the hard work your advisors are doing. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
First by Mr. Buck Roberts, second by Mr. Lockridge. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.